I'd like to call an order that March 14th, Powhatan County Department of Supervision, Pledge of Workshop. I'll do the pledge allegiance and Mr. Kenny, can you do the invocation?
Yes, sir. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for allowing us to gather here today. Father, we just pray for your peace, your wisdom, and everything that we do, Lord, and everything we set our hands in front of God. Jesus, that's our prayer.
Amen. Thank you. Quests to postpone agenda items additions, releases, or changes in the order of presentation. Can I make a motion to approve the agenda? All favor. Aye. Can anybody start it off?
Just one announcement to make this Saturday, a new business relocation, Fast Heat Sports Academy, they'll be having their grand opening, open house. So they're back in South Creek Development. That'll begin, that's a Saturday, March 16th, open house 12:00 before. So a good business that's been in the county for a while and just opening up a new expanded location. That's it.
Good. That brings us to our first public comment period. Three minutes for individuals and five minutes for group.
There's no after the first.
Okay. Not seeing anyone, I will close public comment period.
New business. So tonight we'll go through what individual department requests, including personnel request for those departments. So our budget manager, Mr. Thomasville, will walk us through these and then we're happy to take questions as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Sardine. We're proud to begin the budget review for personnel and departmental budgets. It comprises the majority of Powhatan County's operations and hopefully we can come away with some decisions that finalize budget in the coming months. Just to surmise the revenue increases that will be covering some of the expenditures that will follow, the general fund is increasing $3.5 million with increases coming from real estate through the assessment increases, personal property, public service corporation, some interest and penalties, other taxes such as sales and use tax, some state and federal funding increases, as well as the use of fund balance of $1.7 million, and that's from the 25 CIP. That will be cash funding for the CIP. A summary of our personnel requests, we received a total of nearly $1.8 million and total requests of which $571,000 is being closed. That equates to 4.7 full-time equivalent positions, the total being $507,000.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Kenny.
So when you guys do the request and then you do the reduction, who makes the decisions on who gets reduced?
That I've either working with, working with the finance team, but and talking to our department heads as well, but ultimately the county administrator recommends the budget as planned.
So can we see what cuts you recommended in case we don't agree with that?
Yeah, it'll be on the following slide.
Okay.
Yes. This slide lists out every single position that was requested from our various departments. Positions that were proposed in the current budget will be bolded in the lap. So it's a comprehensive list there. I can read them out or just highlight the bold ones. We start off with the commercial plans examiner inspector was requested, a deputy clerk for the circuit court clerk, three communication officers, three firefighters, as well as a part-time firefighter pool, two Parks and Rec maintenance workers, a part-time farmer's market manager, transportation manager, capital projects manager, a full-time maintenance worker, as well as two part-time maintenance workers for our fields and grounds, a utilities operator, an increase from a part-time to a full-time for the absentee coordinator and our registrar's office, a sheriff's deputy, as well as two part-time sheriff positions, a part-time detective, and a part-time courts and civil process clerk. And again, the positions that are grayed out were requested, but ultimately in the proposed were not included, and those that are bolded were included in the current budget. And we have a lot of time at the end of this presentation to go over not only these positions, if you have any questions regarding what's closed or not, but overall operating for each department as a.
The T-bone and transportation manager, that's one that's funded by CBTA?
Yes, sir. And with that, the part-time farmer's market manager, we expect the revenue, the fees associated with the farmer's market to cover the cost of that position as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And just a brief introduction before we get into the departmental budgets, and there are a lot of slides and budgets, so some of them we can kind of flow through, just depending on their specific needs and asks, but of course, ask any questions as they come up. This budget is based on the county administrator's budget as proposed, which has a 69 cent tax rate. And there's a small note at the bottom and I'll go ahead and read that. Many departments will have something called a true-up or true-up of salaries and benefits. That means that between FY '24 and the current budget, there were changes that happened during the year after the budget was adopted this current year. And those changes may arise from changes in health insurance of employee, changes their health insurance, that'll be a different cost, BRS, BRS status, their overall pay, things of that sort, as well as the compensation and class adjustment that we, that the previous board adopted this past summer, as well as the 2% mid-year raise that was approved of back in December, I believe. So with all those things in mind, that's, that's that true-up, but if you, if you see any that are, that may raise a question, just, just ask us, but a lot of that will come from the common class.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Powers. General question, if we were to pass that, the tax rate at 6 cents, what level, what would that do to your?
I, it would increase it certainly, yeah, significantly.
Manageable?
Well, sure, it just would be at the expense of something else certainly, if we're working on, on a change of that scale, absolutely, we can do it, but there would be other things we're not, not doing.
I just think back to when Mr. Claus was instrumental in reducing the taxes from 77 to 69, bringing things into balance with the assessment would have dictated to be taken, bring to 67 cents. Those two pennies, in today's terms, based on what you told me, pennies worth 570,000 bucks, so that's 1.12 hours. Those two pennies would be in terms of reduced revenue, it could be coming to the county. In brief conversation with so many colleagues, they, they're pretty committed to keeping the 69 cents. Not that I'm not, I just don't, I just would like to see what, what the implication would be if you were to reduce it.
Probably give you a very, very quick high level of things, but, but yeah, I mean to, to balance the budget at that rate and reduce another 1.1 million out of it, it would be some significant changes.
Challenge.
Challenge, absolutely.
I'm, I'm just aware, as all my colleagues, of the, some of the things that are in front of us from terms of schools and potentially looking at some infrastructure issues that we might have to attend to. We're going to be asking citizens of this county to step up if we go through some of those, those expenditures. And I just want to be sure that we can look everybody in the eye and say, we've done our level best.
Absolutely.
To tighten this thing up as much as we can. And I'm not implying that spend Drifter that you have, all budgets have a little room always, whether it's 1.1 million or not, I can't say, but thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. And to note, as we get into the departmental budgets again, we, we group categories, personnel, operating capital, but inside your budget books or the, in the departmental summaries there, there'll be a complete breakdown of every single person's department as to what those office supplies or their postage, if you need to reference anything. And we'll start off with the assessor's office, and we do have Mr. Timberlake here to clarify anything. Overall, their budget's increasing just short of $79,000. Their personnel increase is coming solely from the 4% raise, as well as the, the true-up common class. Their operational increase is just over 45,000, and that is from two parts. Their software vision and camera conversion process, that's reassessment software that they're migrating to, that'll cost them $28,000 in this upcoming year, as well as some increased operational needs. They're a fairly new office, they've been here a few years, so there, there may be some variances there to figure out their exact levels of need for field, gear equipment, various subscriptions, those sorts of things.
Mr. Jim.
And Mr. Powers.
Whether Ms. Schubert or you, Mrs. Bell, I would be really interested for each of the department heads to get a better understanding of maintenance and service contracts. I've had that conversation with you two, and I think, at least I understand, Joey was It represents almost $300,000 increase over last year, and my sense is the county operated just fine.
Can I go ahead and explain that?
Go ahead.
The 300,000 increase is for our land mobile radio project, so from the time that it was implemented until this current fiscal year is the first full year that we have to pay the full, full maintenance service contract, which is $400,000. So that is something we cannot not pay if we want our radio system to be operational for our sheriff's office and our fire and dispatch.
I, yeah, I understand, but in looking at each individual department, I see 20, 30, 40, 50,000 dollar increase in individual departments going up in terms of their maintenance contracts. If we were getting by last year, just fine. Why could we, what would be the implications of going back 24 maintenance and service contracts, with the exception of one you mentioned?
I don't think that from, and I can get more information, but I don't think off the top of my head, anybody's really asking for any new maintenance service contracts other, other than LMR, but each, just like anything else, the vendors do increase their rates each year for the stuff that we are currently using. So with the exception, I guess, of vision, camera going to vision, there's a little increase there, but I, I don't, I, I know what you're saying, I don't mind doing the background, doing the work, but you're never going to see each year the maintenance service contracts just staying the same, because vendors increase the rates on us. And, and we do look, if somebody was, if another software provider can provide the same software for a cheaper price, we do look, but most of the time, for example, our ERP system, they're going to increase that a little bit every year, they're not going to just leave it at the 90,000 for perpetuity, for as long as we're using our software. So Jamie, if you want to speak?
I was just trying to say, there's a little difference in the, so to me, the maintenance service contract for something like, and I'll give you the recent example, a copier that we pay a maintenance service fee on for having that copier, and when the widget went out on the top of it that it wouldn't scan anymore, that was a $1,600 part. We didn't pay a penny. We got it postponed all and they came and fixed it. I don't even, you know, Bridget could probably tell me a little more about what our contract is on that copier for the year, but it's almost like a little bit of insurance. When you're talking about things like vision and those, those are subscription fees. You're not allowed to use that software if you don't pay that fee. I mean, they call it a maintenance service contract, but if you don't pay that fee, they're going to turn your software off. That, that's complete, two completely different categories in my mind.
So Mr. Timberlake, specific to that, yours went from 24 from 16,000 to 25 to 66,000.
Yep.
That's all, that's all the result of the software purchase or?
So part of that's a one-time. As high as the 66, part of that was a, a one-time of 50, which is going to the new software, paying all their people to convert things and all the behind-the-scenes stuff, that was a one-time fee. The 17 is the actual increase, 16 to 17, in their maintenance service contract, which is the ability to use their software annually. It's almost, to me, it's like an annual subscription, but it all, it all falls under the same category in account.
I, I believe we're, that 66 you're referring to, that's actually the Commissioner of Revenue's departmental budget, not necessarily, so that was J.D. Power.
Oh, that was the J.D. Power, yeah, there's nothing I could do about that.
So they all go into this maintenance service contract line, because that's how we look at it, but thank you, Jamie, there's actually something called subscription-based information technology agreements, which is where, it's a GASB counting term, but that's where all of our software subscriptions go. We still call them maintenance service contracts, but in order to use them, that's where it falls in.
Okay. Kudos then to Information Technology Library and Parks and Rec, they had over $100,000 reduction in their maintenance service contracts, so congratulations on that. Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff.
Mr. Kenny.
Hey Jamie, so the new DMV center, does that fall under assessors or your commission of the revenue?
Neither. It's under commission of revenue, but it's its own line item that we're tracking, so.
So that's not included?
Not included.
No, sir, that's definitely not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next department will be our building inspections department. We do have Mr. Donovan here as well to answer any questions you may ask. Overall, their budget's increasing 22,405. Their personnel increase is just the 4% raise, as well as an overall true-up. Their operational increase comes in part to a decrease, but also an increase in third-party inspections, which will help alleviate some of the workload for existing staff, primarily commercial inspections. Okay. Thank you.
If I could, commercial project insurance position, something that's asked for, we're not going to, not, not now, but is something that will stay in, in the, up on the front burner somewhere in, in next year that you're?
Yeah, absolutely, so it's definitely not something to take our eyes off of. We continue with the, the level we are. We want, don't want to burn out Mr. Donovan, because he's currently the sole one certified in the current plan of doing inspection, so, you know, he's doing a lot of that also. Does a great job as a building official over some entire department. We don't want him to just be a commercial reviewer, but also be a building official. But, you know, also concerned right now, if we have a position, if we continue to see residential permits decline like they are, then are we too heavy on the commercial side? We don't have, we have staff, overstaffed on the residential side. So one thing we're exploring is, could we get some of our residential staff cross-certified, trained, near inspection for that, and adding a little bit of third-party to supplement some of it? We continue as busy as we are, that third-party will very quickly eclipse what it would cost me to just hire somebody.
So it's actually?
So we're aware of that, so I think it's something to continue to monitor and absolutely be planning for next year if we aren't able to cross-certify.
Next we have the circuit court clerk. Their budget's increasing overall, 16 and a half thousand dollars. Most of that increase is coming from their personnel, again, that 4% raise, as well as that true-up, which primarily is the common class. Operationally, they're increasing just under $18,000, of which we have the following breakdown, furniture replacement, as well as additions, overall general capital outlay, things such as furniture, office shares, as well as an increase in the contractual price for the land record system, just $2,600, so there. An increase in postage for passports, and we saw an increase in postage for each department through the county, primarily the, the treasurer as well, and general office supplies and travel and education increases for $600.
Eight thousand dollars, is that stuff that's wearing out? They've got new, new people that need to have a place to sit, that?
It's, I, I would say it's a, it's the former, but I can verify with Mrs. Dobbins as far as the specific needs for the furniture. Some of our departments have small, ongoing financial budgets, and some of them may request them on a one-time basis, such as our Commonwealth's attorney for, for some of his furniture.
It's not, it's not a huge amount of money.
Yes, sir.
Raises, raises a question.
Absolutely, thank you. From there, we do have the Commissioner of Revenue's budget here now, overall increase of $149,000. And primarily, that's coming from the 4% raise, as well as the overall true-up, the compensation and class adjustment we did, and that, that true-up again, it will affect departments differently, depending on the results of that salary study we did. A department that may not have needed much adjustment, may have a smaller dollar change or percent increase, but for example, Commissioner of Revenue's office may have had a larger need for common class that they've, that we believe.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Timberlake, is there any alternatives to J.D. Power?
No, sir.
There's none.
That's not right now. There are, there are a lot of different private entities that are trying to do something different, but it was a double whammy because J.D. Power controls it, and they're the only ones who have that source, and then they also stopped the way that they've been giving us the information previously for, you know, eternity, and now we have to go through a third-party to get J.D. Power's, right, and so the third-party's going to jack up the price. We actually came in pretty low compared to some of the other third-parties, because there was three vendors out there in the state that we could use, and we went with the cheapest one, so.
I, I assume that, just based on the way you run your shop.
Yeah.
No alternative?
No, not right now.
And outside of J.D. Power for Mr. Timberlake, his operational increase was $1,450 for office supplies books, things of that sort, and this does include DMV expenditures, so it is financially lumped together. Sir. And the personnel increase also includes possible certification pay, should a staff member of, that Jamie's aware of, meets their master deputy certification during the budget year, we would have that money available to them. Thank you. We have Mr. Sorrello's budget next, our Commonwealth's attorney, who was here for questions, should you have any? Overall increase of $43,000. 32,000 of that is the raise again, as well as the true-up. Operational increase is $11,000. Most of that is 12,000 to replace aging furniture, some of which is from the 1970s, or from the Sistrello, as well as reducing.
Panty, panty, we should get more money.
And he has pictures available, should anyone request them.
I like those pictures.
Panty, pitter.
I wasn't joking, yes.
Well, I mean.
She's no costing.
I'll, I'll need a place to sit.
And with that in mind, Mr. Sorrello decreased some of his other operating accounts. So that's my guess.
Brand new to me.
The face is falling off.
A little stain.
The floor.
That's what the car.
Whatever you're doing.
Keep going. That, you see the wear on the bottom there on the credenza, that's the screw that sticks up out of my, I cut my hand on almost every day. That's my deputy's chair. There's my secretary's desk out front, that's what our taxpayers pay or see when they first pay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the. No, keep going, once you see the seventies, chairman. One of the seventies, that's your charge.
Thank you, Jamie.
That's great.
I got you, don't worry. Next we have our county administrator's budget. We have our county administrator here, if you have any questions in regards to this. Some of his operational increases, the personnel increase is again the raise and the true-up. There's a couple initiatives included in the operational budget here. First one, the majority of the increase is the grant software that we're utilizing with our grant writer, that, that streamlines the, the grant process, their awards, as well as some of the, the written reports and the, and the requirements to submit grants. That cost is $23,000. There's $5,000 in there for small miscellaneous projects through administration, some A and E work there, $3,100, $1,000, $3,100 to support some staff events for some of the employees, as well as the board dinners with departments that you all have been having, and then roughly $6,700 for other miscellaneous operating travel training, office supplies, things of that sort.
We saved $2,000.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We have economic development next here. It's a total increase of 72 and a half thousand dollars. Their personnel increase is, is small, it's $7,100 there, just from the raise and true-up. Their operational increase is roughly 65,000, of which 25,000 is coming from a strategic plan for economic development. Another 25 is for a sign program and a small business grant. These are increases. 15,000 for seasonal decorations in the village area, the light pole specifically, and then a small amount for miscellaneous other operating accounts.
Mr. Chairman, so signage is for signs entering the village, off 60 as they come down?
Correct, yeah, we'd like to do some more, more branding and representing of other areas.
Thank you. Next we have our, our Virginia Cooperation Extension Service. Small increase, though it says operational increase because they're not technically Powhatan employees, this is going towards salary increases for their staff, as well as their volunteer This is, this is the financial department here. We have an overall net decrease in our, in our personnel costs. We're combining two of our positions into one more general position that can take some of the ongoing tasks that we have in our, our office. It includes a certification pay for myself, $5,600, a 4% raise, true-up, that's, that's $20,000 of that total net decrease. And then our increase is for our external audit, this is a contract increase they provided to us. We've been using a purchasing consultant, as well as small increases to our conferences as well, 16,000. Next we have our fire department, departmental budget. It's an overall increase of just over half a million dollars, increasing from 2.5 million to 2.9 million for personnel, and then 100,000 or so for operating. Included in the personnel increase on top of the raise and the true-up is, is part-time firefighters, it's equivalent to 1.5 full-time positions, and it's a, it's a part-time pool because there's no increase in actual personnel, but just available hours that our current firefighters can use for our part-time firefighters to use. And then the, the 4% raise and true-up, continuing on to the next slide, breaks down their operational needs. In the past, our fire and rescue department has received a grant that funds their recruitment and retention. There's thought that in case this grant isn't awarded, that we, Powhatan County, funded that cost, which would cost $100,000. So that's the proposed amount.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Which steps.
So I can answer that for you. So we've been super fortunate in Powhatan to have a recruitment and retention grant for volunteers for the past seven years. We're in our eighth year, and it's, and it comes in four-year blocks, and over the past eight years, we've been awarded just over, it's probably about $1.2 million somewhere in that middle range for the, our recruitment and retention. And over the past eight years, we've been awarded just over, it's probably about $1.2 million somewhere in that middle range for the, our recruitment and retention. There's no documented evidence that, when we are going to seek that grant again, we're actually applying for it right now. There's no documented evidence that the feds have ever done this three times in a row. So we're going to do it, and we're hoping for the best, but if the grant is not awarded to us this, this year, we want to have a fallback to continue with our aggressive recruitment and retention of volunteers. To me, it's been spoken well.
Mr. Chairman.
That was K.
So how much would it add to your budget if you got the three firefighters that you were originally asked for?
That's $250,000 for three.
With benefits?
With them, yeah. Turnout, your benefits.
And, and I can elaborate a little bit more on that, as, as much as we want them, and the request that came from our volunteers, our partners at Fine Creek. I met with them on Tuesday night, and just to, to let them know this is kind of what the, the budget is looking like. And with that, one of the things that we may do this year is do some creative staffing and move one of our part-time daytime persons Monday through Friday from the courthouse station to Fine Creek to see if we can make it, and see how, just to make it work for a year before we make that request again. So we have a plan in place in case we don't get it, and the budget doesn't allow for it, we, we understand. We are preparing for it, so, and also, we've asked the volunteers to step up more at Fine Creek. Those are in the evenings and weekends to, to help us.
But if we could find the money, it would definitely benefit your.
It would absolutely benefit us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And Fine Creek's right in my backyard, so. Just don't respond.
It's mine as well.
And what we've seen with fire and rescues operating budget over the years, there's been a lot of inflationary related cost increases. Some of their equipment, such as their fuel, their apparatus, upkeep, auto repair gear, as well as just some small increases to office supplies, things of that sort. That'll be just over $25,000 there.
Sure. Mr. Chairman. I could ask a question, Chief. We talked about the getting folks certified in the shop, then certified to take care of specialty requirements of fire. Where do we stand on that in terms of the
We, we've had.
And some of train.
We've had some internal discussions with County Minister Will Haggy to kind of, kind of start that, that process again with between county administration, fire rescue, some of the other public safety departments, to, to, to seeing what we can I guess have a, a plan of action and see, see where we need to go. And, and the offer still stands for us, we, we want to educate anyone. One of their mechanics of choice should become an emergency vehicle technician to be able to take better care or do more of our repairs.
I'm led to believe, talking to transportation directors, they have the slot, they just have to nail film. And if they film, then you, you would be willing to train.
Of course, we'd love to be able to participate in that training, yes, sir.
So is the cost of getting inspections done outside unless it's costly?
They, the shop does a really good job of our routine maintenance and routine and preventive maintenance. When it comes to more of the heavy lifting items I have to rely on outside shops or a contractor on the outside, and their, their rates are very steep.
Mr. Mr. Haggy and I are looking at a couple different options, working with schools, share with fire rescue about how we are more responsive to those needs through the shop. So schools has been very, very open to looking at some different models and ways to do it, so we're kind of evaluating it. Rosencon beach and would expect some change in the near future, again, to allow us to be more responsive to
Any discussion with county just taking over the shop?
That's, I mean, historically, that idea's kind of floated out there, so I think everything's on the table for consideration. Thank you. And next, we have our human resources department. Their overall increase is $43,000. Most of that is coming from their, their raise as well as a true-up. Their operational increase is increasing $5,200, that's coming from some of their professional service needs. NeoGov, which is how we use our onboarding, as well as some of our evaluation tools, software, as well as overall increase in background checks, things of that nature. Thank you. Next, we have our, our IT department, and it's a net decrease as Mr. Powers noted earlier. Most of that decrease is coming from a, a comprehensive look at their maintenance and service contract needs, as well as some other additional additions, reductions that have a net decrease as well. And their personnel increase is coming from the raise and true-ups again. Next, we have our library. Their overall increase is $80,000, but as the note at the very bottom of that page indicates, it's true, it's a true increase of 38,000. Once you back out the state matching funds that we receive for the library. But to break down that increase, personnel's, the, the raise and true-up, but there are other increase, which some of that is tied to required state spending for certain categories of how they, and if you need clarification for that, we do have our library director here. 30,000 of that is additional purchases, books, related costs. They need some upgrades and repairs to some of their furniture, as well as some miscellaneous office supplies, electricity costs, their maintenance and internal costs.
I'm just curious, I'm not sure if $30,000 buys many books, but is it, is it fiction, non-fiction?
It's everything, and it's our electronic collections as well. Books, our audiobooks, our DVD. When this, it's, it's the state money that we get, which is supposed to be Yes, not lie, $187,461. It's somewhat restricted spending, books is a big category because but I'm always happy to answer questions. I have lots of talks about my.
Thank you. Next, we have parks and recreations. Overall increase is a hair under $119,000. Overall increases for personnel is a few things, including that raise and true-up. It's a full-time position, a part-time position, as well as a small amount of certification pay, and there's a breakdown below there. We are proposing a full-time maintenance worker one. And with that in mind, in talking with our public works department, our ground staff, some of the work this maintenance worker will be doing will alleviate some of the workload for our ground staff. So more of a synergistic effort. And then there's in that part-time farmers market manager, which we believe will be a, a net zero cost, and a, a small amount for certification pay, specifically the certified parks and recreation professional. And then that, that true-up increase as well.
Mr. Power. I sit on parks and rent on the crack as an advisory person. And I've been impressed with Megan's approach to really making sure that what we have is maintained properly and that it's best, that it's best it possibly can be. And field, field maintenance is vital, and it's something that has to be attended to regularly. I understand the budget's tight, but I know that the request was for two. Those fields are need to be kept in pristine condition. Hopefully, between public works in this new, new position, we'll be able to do that.
But it'll certainly be a step forward, so we'll, we'll see where we are again next year. At that time, we'll have an evaluation of how this is working and that it gets a start. And to clarify, our public works department currently handles the maintenance work fields, so this will be an additional. To break down some of their operational increases, which is just over $23,000, there are some large numbers and smaller numbers they net out to 23,000. First off, it's 25,000 for trails and parks maintenance overall. Includes many of the areas impacted by the ongoing FCP bridge construction. Then there's 10,000 for planned field maintenance, facility improvements, things of that nature with engineering review. All plays in with that position as well. We reduce the furniture lines slightly based on historical need. There's still a, a good amount of furniture budget within this department, as well as some addition, other additions, reductions that have netted out to another decrease of $8,000. Next, we have our permit center, which has an, an overall increase of $20,000, but they have a slight operational decrease of $150,000. So their overall operating budget is slightly lower. Next, we have our planning and zoning department with an overall increase of $80,000. Thirty-six thousand of that is that raise and true-up. Operationally, they're increasing 44,000. Most of that is coming from a request to increase the professional services line by $40,000, just with the workload, updating standards, transportation, engineering, sort of thing. The rest being miscellaneous operating accounts, office supplies, memberships, training, things of that nature. Next, we have Public Safety Communications or Emergency Communications Department. Overall increase of $590,000, split between operating personnel. Personnel does include a, a promotion for our internal staff to be promoted to a CAD administrator. And we do have Mr. Nolan here to clarify the, the duties of that position, it being a promotion. And the rest of that is the raise and true-up, and this is a, this is a great example of what that common class accomplished for our emergency communications. And most of that increase is from the salary study that we, that we and I can go into the operational increase, this next slide here. As Mrs. Schuber lived to earlier, that L-3 Harris increase, which lands under our maintenance and service contract line, increase of just over $300,000. This was an expected increase that we've, that we've known about for a few years now, that was going to hit for this budget. So it's not a surprise to us. And overall, other operating counts resulted in a net decrease of $5,200.
Tom, I think that one.
Yes.
One of the issues is that we walked in for 10 years on this maintenance, so adopted in 2019 places. We try to go back to the maintenance, the companies basically have an older system and replacement parts, and refresh, refresh at year seven. That's built in, the routers, the equipment, year seventy, it would be a lot more than 2019 prices, a lot more than this. So we walked in for 10 years, and optional to 10 years after that. So when I talk to other people in the other business, these prices, and what we're getting for it is, is pretty efficient.
Very good.
And, Mr. Chairman. So salary increases, you guys have an unbelievable retention rate and staffing success, right?
Yes, sir, we do, for, compared to many, the majority of the other centers, we're doing very well at department, our department. People work and perform policy partners and systems.
Yeah, well deserved, I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our public works department. They have a total increase of $233,000. Most of that increase is personnel, that 4% raise again, true-up. Operationally, they're increasing just under $60,000. Breakdown of that increase is as follows. And this applied to our, our libraries budget as well. They experienced a large increase in electricity costs, that's rate increases from Dominion Energy. Same applies for public works here, $27,000 expected increase in electricity costs. The repairs and maintenance has an increased expected cost of $14,000. Field usage, which you'll see across a few different departments, 5,500, as well as some general repairs and maintenance ongoing for the outdoor athletic facilities, 7,000, and a few other items that total $5,785.
Mr. Schuber, you say an expected rate increase. On the south side, so I don't, I'm not seeing any tremendous rate increases, but you, you're sure that you can have that? You say expected?
Yeah, yes, sir, and I, I believe you can clarify that.
Well, it should, generally, the cost increases that we've experienced with our, our bills over the past handful of years is tracking rejection of increase, and then of course, increased staff use, kill a lot of hours, you know, it's, it's for us, we have to kind of project where we see.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, we have our registrar's office or our elections department. With Ms. Alexander heading this, it's overall increase of just over $46,000. And we, we do receive some revenue associated with, with the raise, and we're working out the, the specifics of that. The overall operational increase is $9,700 or so. Like our other departments, we're experiencing increases in, in the postage rates, so for the mail-in ballot specifically, budgeting additional $5,000, as well as office supplies conferences, things of that sort.
Mr. Chairman. Karen out here?
She's online.
She's online. So. Hey Karen, so weren't you proposing to hire another person?
Yes, I was actually, I requested to have my part-time person become full-time, especially with this upcoming presidential year. You know, we're extremely lean staff, only two and a half of us. So I did request to have my part-time person become full-time.
So is that not respected in here?
It doesn't.
So how we're going to be close to take the full, part-time to full-time?
Right around 35,000, but let me check, just to give you the exact number.
So was that proposed grant, something you guys didn't approve of or took out?
Correct, just, just, again, looking at the revenues we had, trying to prioritize, and it's just something that we felt we were not able to recommend to you in this, but again, I don't think there's anything that is recommended that we don't think is, is needed and is any good idea, but again, just trying to prioritize with the revenues as we see them coming.
Yeah, well, I'm concerned with the importance of elections and not having the proper staffing can become problematic. So I'll write that number down, but if we could, I would like to look into possibly coming up with that.
It's actually 38,000.
38,000. Okay, great, thanks Karen.
Thank you, appreciate you all.
Thank you. Now we have the sheriff's department, and we do have Sheriff Nemo here for any questions we have. It's an overall increase of $450,000, and you'll notice that that capital line shows a large increase. That's because last year, we had in, in their budget for one time, their sheriff vehicles, we moved all of them to the CIP now. So the 2,500 is essentially what's left when you remove the vehicles out. Their personnel increase on top of the raise and true-up, which a lot of that, again, is the common class, affected our public safety to a great degree. We're proposing two part-time positions in here. The first being a part-time civil process clerk and a part-time detective with salaries of 35,000 each. Overall cost. The remainder of that, 545,000 is the raise and true-up, and of course, an overall operating decrease because of those vehicles being moved to the CIP. Otherwise, their operating budget was fairly flat when you look at everything else.
Mr. Chairman. So I think Sheriff, you had discussions with the previous board about asking for an additional deputy that was supposed to be funded this year, correct?
We did. Yes, sir.
So how much would that additional full-time position add to your budget?
It would be would be this much, much cheaper. So the salary and benefits and the equipment would be an $89,000 add and then a $69,000 vehicle. So it'd be a total of 158,216.
So that almost, that's less than the operational decrease they say, right?
Well, that operational decrease was for the vehicles for the three deputies they received last year. So it was a one-time, normally I would.
There's a decrease there because we moved.
We moved, we bought three vehicles for three deputies last year, so it was not really recurring dollars. It was a one-time purchase that probably I should have put in the CIP. But it was for ease of when the person was hired and getting those vehicles bought, I put it in the operation.
So.
And the 69 is dependent upon how much we have to allocate to the vehicle, the price of the vehicle itself is not 69,000.
Oh no, so that's what equipment, sorry.
It depends on what we have to put in here.
So to give you what you requested for, but the previous board, I know they're not around anymore, but had agreed to fund would be about plus 150?
Yeah.
Just for all part.
That's based on what was received.
Including a vehicle.
Include the vehicle, yeah.
Close, close.
Okay.
Just, this is information to, you know, while we, one of the reasons, and, and County Administrator and I have continued to work with this position. And looking at what possibilities we could have, because he was very aware of what we discussed last year. And I know Chairman's aware of what we discussed last year. But we, we are still seeing increases in calls for service and, and. From January to March of this year, a pair of apples to apples, we saw a 14% increase in calls. Went from 3,924 calls for service during this three-month period last year to 4,160 during the three months of this year. We're also concentrating a lot of our efforts and that's why we're asking for it as a patrol position. On our traffic on around 60 and quite a few other roads in this area. Our traffic stops alone have gone up in three months from 691 last year to 804 stops we've made since January 1. In the county, so we've increased our presence out there on the roadways and trying to answer out some of our. Facebook, social media pages and, and other areas of complaints with the traffic problems here in the county. So we're seeing, seeing a lot of that also.
So has not having this additional position increased your response times?
It's increasing the number of people available. It can increase the response time, but right now it's a increase in having the number of people available to go to calls. So there is the potential that we would have to delay a call, but it decreases the safety of the officers also. So I've got two calls, three calls one time. I may have sent one deputy to each call until we can free them up to go to another, another deputy come along with them. Put them on that. And yeah, I don't know how difficult it is to go back to that earlier slide where it showed the requests and. And what was not funded so far, but the, uh. Sitting down with County Administrator, we made some progress on a few things, so I don't want it to look like. Everything that you see there that's not in bold didn't necessarily go away either. The courts and civil process deputy sheriff that we're replacing in there, because with all the increase in traffics, summonses and arrests. There's also an increase in courts and, and civil process services. That we were able to fund that without it being a new position through a retirement. So the salary, the position name will change, but we don't need any additional funding. So that's where we moved the part-timer in that was approved. So rather than, it's kind of not reflective of truly what's happening. The courts and civil process deputy sheriff, this will be funded through the elimination of that position. And a part-time position coming in and that should stem the workload enough that I think rather than having another full-time will be okay.
Right, well.
The patrol deputy was an issue.
Yeah.
We are continuing to work on it. We've been having discussions recently and, and, uh. Something that County Administrator are trying to come to something.
Yeah, just this home supervisor's opinion is public safety is always going to come first and especially the safety of your people. So hopefully there's a way we can get you.
Good, Mr. Power. I got a email from Citron yesterday, this is directed at Chief Warner and you, Karen. That he was, he was suggesting that we have more statistics, which you just read. From both fire, rescue and, and sheriff's department. And I would, I would encourage importantly basis, some sort of summary of, of calls and what you all do. How you spend your time. That would be helpful for me if we move forward to further justify, you know, budget request. The other thing I would, am I correct that you've got a grant for another resource officer?
We are in process of reapplying for that, but that was two years back that we approved that school resource position. So that we would be able to have a resource officer in every school, which we did.
To do that.
And speaking of grants, that was last year, we were successfully able, we spent, you, you can see. Well, on your final breakdown, you can see our equipment budget is not $220,000 a year, but we spent $220,000 a year on equipment last year. Upgrades to firearms, uh, uniforms, belts and everything else and none of that was counted on. We were able to fund all of it through truck forfeitures and grants that we worked on and received. We spent three times what our normal equipment budget would have been around without having to bother you guys.
So from a standpoint of resource officer, you're where you need to be.
I am there where I need to be, that was taken care of two years back. So we're in good shape.
And so if you get the grant, you'll get one, one more?
If I get the grant, it will offset the county's funding, put in the budget of, I believe we had it in, as if we don't get grants, so it would be a plus.
So currently, which I'll bring into your March meeting, we will be, so we had to work through with the state on the match. Cause they base their match on your local composite index. Instead of most hiring grants, they do kind of a 75-25 for a four-year cycle. The, I think it's about 52,000 to cover that resource officer position. And I believe with our great coordinator and our Ministry of Services Sergeant, they have applied for the third year. So it's one of those hiring grants where you get it one year and then more and more. I don't know how the third year, because if it's based on local composite index, we might get a little bit more money back because our, our next two year got better. So it's, he's already budgeted in there, but because we have to match those funds anyway. So we get a portion, we are going to get a portion of his salary back and then the rest of it is our, our match.
Match is in the budget.
Yes.
And every, every year to, uh, our. The first year budget helped offset the car, equipment, things like that for the deputy also. So there's less money needed each year. You know, first year we created deputy position is our most expensive year. Uh, that, that discovering new position, uniforms, training, vehicle costs, things like that. But you're not buying a vehicle for every year, you're not buying new uniforms every year. So obviously it costs the first year is your, is your big hit, it's down from there.
Mr. Chairman. Um, so one question, Sheriff, the wonderful young lady that provided me with the traffic statistics for the redesign of 1360.
Not.
To Mrs. Powers' point, could I call on her to.
Certainly.
Produce the statistics that Mr. Powers would like to have access to.
I would have suggested you call myself or other, the chief deputy, we'll get our own phone for you or let her know what you need. And probably quicker to contact one of us. And that way I can get you material. We normally send that over to Paltan today. Uh, since a lot of their stuff has changed with circulation and things like that, they're not really requesting me any longer. So it was out there at one time in their local papers.
Yeah, that would be, it would be helpful. Yeah, I just put it on my to-do list to maybe reach out to you guys and record.
We can try to make it an automatic thing.
That would be, that would be great. Thank you, Sheriff. But Mr. Power.
Go ahead. Good?
Good.
Thank you, Sheriff Nemo. Um, moving on, we have social services, overall increase of just over $365,000. Now their increase with the raise and true up does include a conflict class adjustment. And Mr. Sharp and I can kind of expand upon that.
Yep, we did need conflict class adjustment. A study last year for general county government, it did not include social services there. You know, I buy a different space where they're, they're local, but also have seen a significant amount of state funding and are also on a state payment plan. Which isn't necessarily a great fit for Paltan because it's one size fits all from smallest Virginia locality all the way up to Virginia Beach or Fairfax. Um, so we're doing a similar to what we did for general county government last year, a common class adjustment study, just internally. It's, it's small enough, we felt we could do that internally to kind of make the state generic pay plan fit what makes sense in Paltan County.
And that budget number there, 300, 113,000, that was a placeholder in the beginning estimate. We're working currently with HR as well as social services to get a hard number down. And our current estimates are below the budgetary ask right now. And their operational increase is $140,000 and Ms. Schuber can kind of expand upon that as well.
Uh, so those operational increases are for their, uh, some of their programs, the purchase, what they call purchase of services and. I don't think the term of the other programs, but they have certain programs that they have to pay certain costs and then also their operations. A big part of that is they have an attorney that they pay that helps them, helps represent them in their cases. For, for the department. Uh, we do get on all of this, there is state and federal funding that does come back to us for all of these increases, but it's. It varies based on the time of the year that, you know, state likes to give you more. And then as you spend all that, they give you only a certain amount and then it switches to be in about 68% local. But, but this is their total expenditure cost. The revenue side shows that breakdown on what we get back.
And breaking out of, with, in lieu with social services, we have CSA. Which has a total increase of $700,000 from 2.302 million to 3.002 million. And the increase is coming from information that our CSA department has received from the state in regards to future service costs. Provider rate increases is something we experienced the year before, if you look at 23 to 24. And we're again experiencing 24, 25. Sure. With that, we do have our treasurer's budget here, total increase just under 73,000. The increase is primarily from that 4% raise as well as the true up. Some operational increases. Like our other departments, a lot of the increase here is coming from the postage rate increases just due to the amount of mail. That goes through our treasurer's department as well as some planned additional supplemental buildings that may occur. Other increases include printing, advertising, which total 1,350. Uh, we do have our utilities department next, total increase of 400,000. Um, and we do have a line that says debt service there, since we, we lump in the debt service maintenance with this department here. Uh, breaking out some of those increases, just under 96,000 is that raise and true up again. Operationally, they're increasing 290,000. We do include, and I didn't include that in the parentheses, so my apologies, a, an increase. A, a position request for a full-time utilities operator, which we do have. Mr. Duncan, as well as Mr. Brady here, answer any questions in regards to that? It's just a hair under $72,000 for that position. Do you have any questions for the personnel? Thank you. Going into that operational increase of 287. Most of this, or I would say a third of this is coming from the Chesterfield water capacity costs. It's, it's something that we have to pay should Richmond City accomplish certain CIP upgrades to their utility system. I was previously unfunded, so we're asking for funding for this. Estimated cost of 108,000 dollars for that. Professional services is increasing 67,000 there. Um, so maintenance and service contracts, 26,000. Requesting for one time two spare pumps, 21,000. And there's lab supplies, chemicals, water fees, electricity, things of that nature, just under 65,000.
It's true. Are we contractually obligated to pay that other $1,000?
Yes, yes.
Well, how long? What's the term of that contract?
It's in perpetuity. So that's a part of the Chesterfield water contracts. So we purchase water from Chesterfield by way of Richmond City. So when they make capital upgrades to their water infrastructure, a percentage of that cost is passed on. By owner, by contract.
So once again, our destiny is controlled by city Richmond and Chesterfield, in terms of why do you tell it?
Mr. Chairman. Thinking back on what Mr. Powers is saying, have we ever entertained any kind of feasibility study to get off of Chesterfield water and look for a source where?
We're, uh. We're looking at different options now to expand capacity in the future, completely getting off Chesterfield system. No, I don't think it's something we seriously look at. We look more at how do we supplement, add secondary sources, things like that. Even if we were to come up with a secondary source, I wouldn't recommend we drop off that with, we would want some redundancy, we would want some. And really the way water's going, the state is very much encouraging, or at some point they'll be requiring regional cooperation. So having a system that is shared, even though it has some, uh, as you pointed out, some limitations is what we can't control. That is exactly what the state is going to push us towards is working with our neighbors, Chesterfield, et cetera. So could we reduce our dependency on, have secondary sources, absolutely, but I don't see that system ever going away completely.
But other question is, if we reduce our dependency on disproportionately, our percentage, we got to pay to maintain the infrastructure.
I think we, we will probably have to renegotiate that, but if we were to reduce our dependency, Chesterfield, I'm sure we'd be happy to take back some of that water. Because they have their own needs, so in that case, that I think it would, it would make sense that we renegotiate, reduce that.
Because we're flushing a lot of the water anyway.
And just to clarify, that 108,000 dollar cost there, that's not a known, we will pay this cost this year. For instance, that was something that was unfunded last year. We could have been hit with that cost last year, we weren't. So there's that possibility again, it all depends on what Richmond City intends to do with their, their utility projects. So is there if, if they do make those upgrades?
I did a joint meeting and I think it's, it's very heated. We've been critical of schools not giving attention to maintaining their facilities over many, many years. That bill is now coming due. I want to make sure that we don't do the same thing with our infrastructure. Which at least, on my research, looking at past, past, like in sports. We're not, we're not giving the attention that we deserve relative to where, where these want. They say where some of us want the county to be. And the things that we know that are in front of us right now. That could consume all of the capacity that we have. And depending on Chesterfield cooperating with us, to me, is constraining and unacceptable. Just speaking for myself. So unfortunately, the cost of doing some of this is monumentally expensive. But it's not going to get any better. And so biting the bullet, at least getting the process rolling, you never see that.
Nothing. Mr. Chairman. I just came, so just one more question, Brett. So as far, the state hasn't adapted anything on regional cooperation, correct?
There is regional water supply plans, but I'm not sure there is a regional mandate that we lost. But if we were to make a proposal for a new well or water intake or something, that's, that's a significant state permitting and review. I'm sure that would be part of it, looking at what are the other options. And that's why Chesterfield with their. And that's why Chesterfield with their, you know. It's large by budget, their water needs, spend a billion dollars in the reservoir and do that regionally with with Goochland. Comfortably. Previously Powhatan, so again, even even with their large budget where they can simply do whatever they want, add to, have to partner regionally. So now I'm not sure there's a strict argument, but it's just something that we may, you know, expect of us to at least explore and be able to defend why we're partnering with Chesterfield or whatever.
Sixty to go, Powhatan and Reston. Have been. If I may, appears to be Chesterfield wants to maintain control of the water more than they want any money. They don't need our money. They they want, they want, they want, water's far more valuable to them.
We've got a number of options of historically things we've looked at that we're looking at again, as well as new ideas. So there's a couple of different fronts that we're kind of investigating all at once.
Front burner.
Yeah, so I would expect some some additional CIP projects.
Yeah, I can carry with these powers.
I have one question on utility, testing costs are going up, what's what's causing?
We have a couple of different reasons for that, just the contract in lab that we use, fixments. Contracted lab that we use, we're all adjusting, the prices have gone up when they're in. And as the plants grow, get bigger, the requirements for testing. It's also increases, it's tripled this month of what we used to do.
A whole science because we're not, we're not doing what should be.
That's that's not a fun, that is just testing requirements that that EQ requires of us.
Are we, are we in good, good. Our friends at EPA, are they, are they happy with us? Relatively?
I think we would know if they would get there last time.
We wrapped up the counties involved that we did EPA last year, so we have no involvement with EPA currently.
We're in good shape. Our friends at DEQ are happy relatively.
When you're at current consent order on the Vice Beach wastewater kingdom plan, we're under a running letter at Doots Way wastewater kingdom plan with DEQ. But that's largely been part of the four, so the last twenty years. That's that's about as happening as it gets.
So does that speak to also the need for some attention being given to on the on the waste side, not just the water supply?
That wraps up the overall departmental budgets, we do have a calendar here. Just as a reminder for upcoming meetings, March eighteenth, this upcoming Monday, we'll have a meeting that discusses solely the CIP. But we do have time for discussion regarding the departmental personnel budgets. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman. So what would the impact be if the tax rate went from point six nine to point seven a year?
So is each penny about five hundred and seven?
So. That is correct. But if we decide to raise it, I have to re-advertise for thirty days before I can have the public hearing, which will push the adoption, I believe would be the end of April, which would. Really hurt the treasurer commissioner at this point. That because because it's about anytime your current rate or anything you're proposing is above the effective tax rate, I have to do a thirty day notice, which the current notice has already been put out. To meet the March twenty fifth, that's the regular board meeting, correct? For a regular board meeting to do a public hearing on the real estate tax rate. So if you decide you want to change it, which I'm not advocating one way or another, we have to re-advertise for thirty days. If it goes up.
Down.
It goes down if it's still above the effective tax rate, except there is a calculation if it's more, not more than one percent.
Right, but you've already advertised sixty nine, which is over that, so in this current, this year's situation, you wouldn't have to re-advertise if you went down from sixty nine. But that's not the case every year, that's a calculation that has to be done every year.
So Rob, now, I mean, ring ring, again, this is a discussion session, so. Part of mine. I guess direction I would like to go is to take a hard look at the budget because. I mean, fire and rescue, two fifty, elections, thirty eight, and the sheriff, one fifty. I think if we look at the overall budget, we can look at that. Because to me, public safety is the number one concern. Like if I have an issue, I don't want to have to wait another couple of minutes just in case, or, you know, two deputies show up and I really need three or four. So that would be, and I I don't want to touch the tax rate.
Adjustment would be on the expenditure side.
Correct.
So are there, what what would be the options for mid-year, half-year?
I did reach out to county attorney just to be sure that I understood, there is an opportunity, you could. Change the tax rate for the second half, which would be for the November. We would still have, would want to do, give them plenty of time. We'd have to time it to make sure they have plenty of time to get those bills out and get that changed as well. But that would still only be depending on what you increase it, if you increase a penny, you're only going to get a half a penny. Because it's only the second half.
For that.
For that year. So if there is opportunity, I would have to work through logistics with treasurer and commissioner and how that would. Work with Keystone. And the timing on that.
So the other question then, so you said the vehicles that. The sheriff paid for that money, the reason there was a an offset is because you transferred that money from there to CIP.
Well, I didn't transfer CIP, it's it is a reduction because it was a one-time pay, so. We we looked at that line and said, okay, except for his new civil process deputy, we did go ahead and make sure we got that car into the CIP for next year, which is why there's seven vehicles in there. Versus the six that he originally asked for, the seventh vehicle would be for that position being converted over to a deputy. From what the current position is now, so but when I look, when we look at the budget, we go through some of those one-time things that we know aren't coming up again, we reduce the budget back down to what he actually needs in that line. So that is why there was a decrease of the hundred and seventy was that we bought three vehicles out of the operating fund last year versus the CIP fund for three new positions.
And look in some of Robert's sheet where we had carryovers and CIP. Let's call it, I'm not calling extra money because I probably have the wrong term and I'm not an accountant. Is there any possibility we can transfer some of that money into the budget to pay for these things, fire elections and and the sheriff asking?
It is not recommended because that would be considered one-time funding, it's a one-time source. Your budget usually, it should be, it always is budgeted of a recurring revenues because. Once we add those positions, they are now a recurring expense, so I could do it for one year, it wouldn't necessarily. Hurt us on rating agencies, they don't necessarily recommend that, but then you're going to have to make that money up next year in next year's budget, you're going to have to find those recurring revenue dollars to still fund those as you move forward.
Right, but that gives us a whole year to look into other options to get that revenue recurring down the road. And there's other things that could come into the county that could help balance that out.
It it could, it could, it's just not, it's it's typically not, I could reach out, well, actually, Dan Port is going to come and speak to you guys on rating agency and all of that during your CIP meeting. It's not. It's not uncommon for you to do it occasionally, but fiscally responsible as far as your rating agencies, you shouldn't do that very often to to fund recurring operations with one-time funds.
It could be something we could put on the back burner if we're unable to balance, but there are ways to come up with the funding for the first responder.
You could.
But I think our our first is supervisor, as I pointed out, the first thing we'll do, and you know, again, this is just a recommended budget, we're going through the process exactly as we should, so if there's some initiatives or things you'd all like to see. You know, type, we think this is important, show us how you fund it, we'll look at the expenditure size and reduce expenditures. You know, it's all trade-offs and priorities, but we'll tell you, okay, to do these, here's, here's what we would recommend, we look at cutting or reducing within the recurring expenditures, that's where we would go first. And then, as Sir P. Charlotte said, kind of goes up, last secondary resort, we could look at one-time funding, but first we would. Go over the budget, see if there's any more efficiencies, reductions, or then prioritize other things that we could go to the future.
Yes, the second half, we could raise the tax rate. Is it legal? Can we do, if we raise it, to earmark that delta between what it is now, or whatever we'd raise it to, to take care of the school issue?
You could certainly do that, yes.
Earmark that tax increase for the school?
Yeah, I mean, if you you can designate a certain number of pennies for a particular thing, I know. I believe one of the years, probably early on when I first got here, we, it was an effective tax rate increase. The board decided to use a certain number of those pennies to get our career staff started. That was, and we we said X amount of pennies of this effect, since we're not going to bring it down to the effective tax rate, we're going to use X amount of pennies to get our fire department started with our career staff. So it is legal, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing out there that says you can't earmark a penny for this or for that.
Set up a second fund for that money?
I mean, I would transfer the money over into, if it if it's for school construction projects, we would transfer it over into the CIP. And into its own line and I would, it would carry over and accumulate each year until you authorize them to spend it, so.
And if we authorize that only in this budget year for half the year, we'd have to reassess that and approve it for the following budget.
I think it'd be easier for a direction for me, that if we go, if you decide to increase by a penny or two and say that two pennies is for construction for schools, then I I would recommend, just easier for me, is the next year, whatever that tax rate is. To to continue to give us that direction, that that's what you want those pennies to go for, that would be part of beginning. Which we didn't have the opportunity with you to do, kind of discussing what your budget guidelines would be, that could be something you could direct us to do, and that's that's how we would build that, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman. So Brett, what is, so if the governor signs the one percent deal, what's the earliest we can advertise to have a referendum on that? I know you can't do it in the presidential election year, but that one percent could go towards the schools, so I mean, as soon as we'd be able to do that, we could start advertising. So. Could it be implemented in this year's fiscal budget?
Now, we're not able to get this.
Twenty twenty six, I think.
Twenty twenty five.
Wait till the governor, governor's signature.
Cannot have a referendum on the election year.
Right, when I thought the governor, all you had to sign.
Referendum election year.
So you each decides it, and then it will be in the state code, in the law, that all localities can do it, then we have to wait for a non- federal election year to do it, so.
Which would be January twenty six, twenty five.
Be in the sixth, yeah, be fiscal year twenty six, November of twenty five would be the election year.
Considerably there's an effective date, usually January first after the bill. So I think in the financial forecast, I did January twenty twenty six, I can verify.
The referendums has a cost, it has to be marketed, facilitated, and you have absolutely no guarantee.
So it's just close, so currently the best option to fund the first responder's position would be to look at our budget, see what we could try and do it that way. And then Robert's point, if we need, we don't even know what the school has asked for as far as he funds it, but to his point, if we get this. Then we could. At the second half of the year, discuss or possibly look at raising the tax rate from point seven zero, point seven one, and additional resources can be reduced.
Yes.
Thank you.
One one less.
Sure.
Just because you said that it won't be. And I I know I'm going to get some boos out of this question. We spent FY twenty four, almost two point one million dollars, it raises it in coffee class. And we're asking almost a, almost a million dollars for true up and increase in salary.
And that, again, that that true up is, it's coffee classes and that true up.
I I guess I got the explanation.
Yeah.
Still, we spent two point one million dollars last year, but we're being asked now to spend another one. Let me, let me broach this with with you, Ms. Schubert. Let's say we, we say, yeah, the four percent is fine, let's let's split that across two years. That represents almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we now have. Available to us.
Yeah, the the issue is that, you know, we're in competitive environment for employees and our competitors are not splitting it over two years.
Didn't we make ourselves competitive when we did the coffee class?
For last year. So so that got us on par with everybody for last year, but the region, again, our competitors continuing to move themselves forward, so even though that brought us up last year, if we don't do anything else. Then standing still, we're moving, moving behind. I'm in four percent is kind of the lower range of what we're seeing in the regions, some others are five, some are as much as ten, fifteen percent for certain select employees. So again, if we just look at us. You know, yeah, it's year over year, we've gotten increases, but year over year, our competitors have given the same or more. So again, our concern is to just lose ground, and there's a cost that losing good employees, the sort of knowledge mistakes get made. Pay more to people to keep the ones you want, so there there is a cost to not be competitive in the markets, we're sensitive to that. Powhatan, we don't look to leave salaries for the region, you know, in Reiko, Chesterfield, they they kind of leave salaries in the region, but there's pros and cons working in those places. If you're in Powhatan, part of it is, you know, Powhatan, the lifestyle and what it is and all that, so we're not looking to have the highest salaries in the region, but we want them to be close enough that people aren't competitive for Hannah or Chesterfield and Reiko. So again, my concern would be, sure, it could be split into two years, this year, two next year, and anything above zero is appreciated, but our problem is our our peers, our neighbors, our competitors aren't doing that.
I appreciate the answer.
I'd also like to point out in that eight hundred thousand in December, the state awarded a two percent raise to all teachers and state constitutional officers, so the county gave the employees two percent. Well, in effect, we only funded that for six months, so now we have to fund the additional, the two percent for a whole year. So that's what's part of that, so I just want to clarify that four percent plus benefits isn't eight hundred thousand, we are making whole the two percent raise that we got in December. Because it's five twelve, so actually, we.
Can I, can I add something just to kind of echo what you were saying, so my background, it started actually in HR, I was director of professional development for the Richmond compensation association.
And can we wait until public comment?
Oh, it's not in public, oh, okay, sorry, this is my first time coming to a budget meeting.
Well, I'm sensitive. Brett, I'm sensitive, I'm sensitive to what you just said, and. We certainly need to be competitive and not be losing staff because surrounding county, rod, rod market folks away, I I get that. But, you know, just overall. What I see coming down in front of us. Can't speak, you know, myself. We're going to have to start differentiating wants from needs. And I think to 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 Mr. Kenny's point, as as we go back and look through the budget, as we've asked you to do, fund some of the other things. I think we really need to put that yardstick against needs versus wants.
And if I could help expand on what the county administrator was saying. In our budget talks, we we chose not to ask this year because of that very reason, but put it in perspective, Gooseland's starting salary for deputies next year will be sixty thousand dollars, ours is fifty two, fifty two. So that's, that's just as a example of the county that's comparable to us. That's what we're facing, we chose this year not to ask for any type of increase in starting salaries or. Adjusting the current salaries to match the starting salaries going up, so wouldn't create any problems. So, yeah, thank you, I didn't realize, New Ken's going to fifty nine, which is very comparable to us. So to reiterate what Brett said, we're not always, we're not trying to stay in the highest paid deputies, we find we have very old deputies there. Their. Rate of losing deputies is, we're retaining nine nine percent. Their rate of losing deputies is, we're retaining 99%.
100%.
No, 100% last year. Yeah, and so everyone had a retention rate. So we're doing a good job keeping here, but being happy doesn't leave.
Just one last thing, then I then my last, last. I just am sensitive to the fact that all of these increases. 92 cents on the dollar goes to residential homeowners. And next budget will be another $100, another course, increase of whatever. 14% in operation costs on average across all. All that bill until we get our act together on having more commercial business to share that tax burden, which is we'd take time. We're we're sending the bill, 92 cents of it, to the homeowner, residential homeowner. And I don't know about you, you all, but when I campaign, that was numero uno at the door. So I'm just, I'm just saying, we just need, we just need to be sensitive where we're going. And our friends on the school side are really going to stay this, we have to build. So, yeah, pay for by the homeowner, the residential homeowner.
And I would say we we absolutely, you know, shared board's goal in expanding the personal tax base, reducing the burden on the residential homeowner. To do that, good economic development, economic development is truly a team sport, so we need to retain a good team. We don't keep good people, then we can't have good economic development, so.
I guess I give my, we all, we all did a great job just here. I get to make some cuts already, I appreciate all the hard work and good budget process. Great job. Thank you. Are we still in schedule for?
Yeah, as long as we set the rate on the 25th, actually, we start the vote. I need about two weeks with the printers and we're good.
Thank you. Nobody else has anything else that brings us to our second public comment period? Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for a group. For the new, for the people that have not been here before, there's a sign-in sheet, which you can sign afterwards after you speak. You want to, and I will now, public comments, please state your name and your address, please.
All right, my turn. I'm sorry. Anjik Masoodar, 27-year resident of Powhatan County, living at 481 Cosby Road, District 5. Thanks for all the project presentation that was important. I want to start by referencing what I said last week about my conversations with Ms. Morissette when she was running for the oppositional supervisor. And I'll just state one or two points that she made to me. That to the extent possible, Powhatan County and the Board of Supervisors should be run by the business. My experience is 45 years in corporate America, most 10 years in engineering and manufacturing, the remaining 35 years in strategic business planning and analysis. So when I heard that, to me, that implied that a budget of the business approach should focus on outcomes and results and not just on numbers. A budget is a means to achieve certain goals and results. So as I was going through all of these presentations, I didn't see a linkage between the numbers and the results. Yet, on one of these cover sheets, there was something about targets and performance measures, but I didn't see that in the individual budgets. So given that, should we assume that the goals and the measures would be what you shared a few weeks ago when you showed the 2024 vision, mission, goals and objectives for year one of that four-year cycle? Should we assume that that's what the targets would be, the measures? What are the top three critical measures of success for each department? So for my friend Jane over here, what are the top three critical measures of success? And will these budget numbers deliver that? Something more, something less, or just hold the status quo as the current year? In the corporate world, one of the things that we always look at in any budget presentation is what is the effect of process improvements of productivity, projects and initiatives? And are they baked into the budget? In other words, if we did nothing in process improvements or productivity, our costs would go up X percent. But because we did some of those process improvements of productivity projects, our costs are actually going to go up, but not at the same rate as we did nothing. Could we quantify that in the budget? And if we can, can we also provide what is the track record, the cumulative amount over the last five years? So that we get a sense that over the last five years, we have offset inflationary costs by X millions of dollars. Being a small rural county in our large metropolitan area, to realize synergies and economies of scale, what effort has been made to identify, simplify and eliminate duplication of work, of effort between the county and the school? For example, in the areas of facilities management, procurement, finance, HR, IT. There's a lot of duplication, each organization is doing the same thing and the residents are paying for that. But what is there an opportunity for us to gain some synergies, some economies of scale? And get that back to the residents? Yesterday, I met with Thomas Vo, just to satisfy satisfy my curiosity. And I was happy to learn that the county has a formal employee performance management, feedback and compensation system. I was really, really happy to learn that. Applaud that since that sort of a system can be a motivator of our high performance. And not only that, but drive results, the high performance will help drive the results. However, one of the concerns that Thomas mentioned, and I'm going to pick on him for having said that, is how uniformly are those standards being applied across all the departments? Are those standards or those definitions, are they objective or are they subjective? If you want, I can clarify what I mean by that. You can do. Linking a budget to results will gain acceptance and credibility from the county resident. So as we present numbers, if we can link results to those numbers and show the residents that here is why we need to spend X amount of monies, but these are the results we will gain in my mind that will gain acceptance and credibility. And finally, I have no supporting evidence or data, but I believe many residents would be willing to pay more for faster and better results. That's my belief. I know I will. If you can give me faster and better results, I'm willing to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, if I could. Can't speak during the public eye.
I apologize before. Some Serpoc, 2221, almost 20. So I I echo what the gentleman said, that that was one of the things I've been trying to talk to Mr. Denali and Mr. Plum about because I like I spoke at the last board hearing, I encountered some issues with now two of the CPS employees. And it's the lack of training and the lack of professionalism. There's opportunities where we may need to evaluate who stays and who goes. And I think to echo what Brett is saying, that we need to invest in the employees who are providing strong value and helping us get to a point where we can streamline processes. But at the same time, I'm also a mental health advocate. We've got one employee in the county who is working between Goochlin and Powhatan, and she's overworked, spinning plates, and really, at the end of the day, she needs a promotion and a raise at the circuit court office. I have encountered three employees, one should go and two are incredible, and they they deserve recognition because if we're going to streamline and have achievable results, that's an investment. So we're going to have to put an investment into how to streamline processes, an investment into programs that we need, and an investment, most of all, into our people, because our people is is who gets it going. And they're also the face of the county. A lot of these individuals are public facing and they're basically customer service. And at the end of the day, that's the greatest investment that we have is our people. So I actually was disappointed not to see more promotions or things. I think the sheriff's department, and then there was one other department, and I would have liked to have seen more more in there because we need to recognize the individuals who are also going to keep us out of liability lawsuits. The reason we're dealing with school issues. And also, there's basically looking at three, two other class action suits, and I'm with We the People Brass Roots. And now all three are looking at working together. With the last board, I tried to provide consult, free consulting for this. No one wanted to listen. Would this would have been prevented with the last board, had they taken the steps that I had recommended? It's like I have a background, starting at McGuire Woods, Federal Reserve, land development. And what I've been talking offline is, I'm a land developer. I I can bring affordable housing and commercial development, which lowers taxes through copper, but I'm not bringing it if we don't have the infrastructure, because it's going to open the door for more liability lawsuits. And as a Powhatan resident, I'm I'm not doing that. Because I don't want my taxes and I don't want that publicity, because we are an amazing county, but we're still operating really under under par. And not, I think everyone here is amazing, but I think there's just some opportunities for some improvement, especially in the area of liability.
Hey, my name is Joanne Fiego. I live in 2762 Bailey Road. I am now in District 3, I've been in District 3 most of my time here. I just wanted to really introduce myself. I'm chair of the Library Ward of Trustees. I met Mr. Kenny at a meeting that he attended, and I'm the one who sends us those little updates every month. So I figured it might be nice to have a phase associated with those little updates. And as a private citizen, I just wanted to say, having attended a lot of these meetings, thank you for the normalcy and the professionalism. It's appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? No one else? I'll close second public comment period, and one county administrator comment.
No other comments.
Board comments. Mr. Powell. Break my break my promise already. To the point of having measurable criteria, that's exactly what we are engaged in doing as a staff and under Brett's, Charlotte's direction in terms of strategic planning process. And those measurement criteria will be part of that plan. And we we will be held accountable as a county against those criteria. And I I know that you're you're working hard along with 10,000 other things to get that plan adopted right now. Within many reasonable.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
That starts up to. Senior board comment. Do the rest of your day.